This meeting of the Kerrville City Council is in order. I'd like to ask you to stand, please. Let's bow together in prayer. Father, we thank you for the good things that are happening in this community, the collaborations that are going on to accomplish big things, folks reaching out to help other people, and a sense of vision of where we can go as a community. Lord, we know we've got a ways to go. Give us guidance in how we get there. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Let's join together and pledge. I pledge...
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You will see the Shriner University sign here and also the 2050 Kerrville sign. At 5:30 today here, we signed a compact agreement with the city and with Shriner University. We worked together in a lot of ways, but this just formalizes it and we hope increases what we can do for Shriner, Shriner can do for us, and together what we can do for the city. In regard to protocol for the meeting, and you've heard this before, but I'll go over it again. You need to sign up to speak if you're going to speak to an item. No one will be recognized unless they fill out a speaker form before a particular item is called or read for consideration. Also, remember that everyone, including council, is to be recognized before speaking. Everyone shall refrain from abusive, rude, or inappropriate conduct that hinders or disrupts official proceedings. And this will allow everyone to hear and in the recording to reduce potential for confusion. Thank you, everyone, for abiding by those items. And now announcements of community interests. These are things that are not on the agenda, don't relate to the agenda items, but opportunity to share some things happening in the community.
Thank you, Mayor and council, and welcome to everybody tonight. We just have a couple of quick announcements. I think the Kerrville Parks and Recreation Department has had something every weekend so far this summer, and the next two weekends are going to be no exception. This Friday, we have movies in the park. This is actually the first one that we've had in the park. Last week, last Friday, we had one at the pool. This is the first one in the park. Friday night, July 12th, 9:00 p.m., we're dark showing of Incredibles 2. So if you have an opportunity, come on out. We were looking at our numbers this morning. We posted this yesterday on Facebook. We've reached over 11,000 people and had 125 shares. So we may have a pretty good crowd out there. And we welcome all of them. It's a free event sponsored by the Calo Foundation. Popcorn is free and drinks are dollars. Y'all coming by if you want. And then next week, we continue with our concerts by the river. This, this, next Friday night, July 19th, we actually have a country and rock, two groups, that begins at 7:00 p.m. at Louise Hayes Park, another free event. And this one is sponsored by James Avery, Crenwolke, GMC, and Minimo. This is the third one. This will be the third one that we've done. We've had great attendance of the first two. So welcome everybody out there. It's a lot of fun. Thank you.
Good. Council, any...
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes.
I have about four shout-outs, if I may do that. I'd love to do a shout-out to everyone in our community that was part of the Wounded Warriors effort. It was fantastic and we made national news, or well, we made San Antonio news. So, but I just, it was, what a wonderful thing it was for those families. To our police department, thank you for the Junior Academy that you did. I just think that's great. And I think you had 18 kids maybe, a part of that? So I thought that was super. To the Blue Bonnet Community, they did a Fourth of July Bike Parade in the community. And I understand they just had some, some great bikes decorated and it was just, I think more of our different areas in town should look at doing that. That was just super, so a shout-out to them. And the last thing I'd like to mention is Kerr Connect still needs drivers. So for those of you who may know somebody that could do that, or yourself, we just need, they just need more drivers. Their program is just doing great. So keep that in mind. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
I have one more.
Yes.
The Calo Theater just presented its new performance season, the 2019-2020 Performance Season. And if you're interested in seeing all the six new performers coming up, you can see me after the meeting. Anyway, Calo Theater is open for business and has some great entertainers coming throughout the rest of this year. So, by the way, I'm sponsoring Mark Wells. Does anybody know who Mark Wells is? Country singer, great guy. He'll be there September 19th, I believe. So...
All right, good. Thank you. Thank you.
I have one more.
Yes.
I just want to give a shout-out to everyone that was involved in Kerrville's Fourth on the River, from the group that put it on, to the volunteers, but especially to the city staff, to the police who kept things under control. And man, I left that place and thought, who's going to clean this up tomorrow? So just a shout-out to everyone that made it happen. By the time I rode across that bridge, it looked pretty clean the next day. So I just thought it was a great draw for our community and it took a lot of effort on the part of hundreds, if not thousands, of people. So I just want to make sure I said thank you for that.
Good. Let me just say one word about the Wounded Warriors. I had some time with them and I want to tell you, folks, your heart goes out and you realize freedom is not free. There are costs. And think of one young man who multiple deployments to Iraq and Afghanistan, and the last one to Afghanistan, caught an IED and he'll be in a wheelchair for the rest of his life. But this citizens' group that's put that together every year does a wonderful job. And if the kids are old enough, they spend the week at Camp Stewart and Heart of the Hills. But it gives those families a time to get away and they're just loved on and cared for. Okay, visitors forum. Speak on any item not already listed on the agenda as a separate item. No discussion can take place or the council can't respond. But you have four minutes. Do we have any...
We do have two visitor, citizen speakers. The first one, Martha Hicks.
Well, I'm Martha Hicks. I'm at 922 Cypress. My item got mentioned by Ms. Agner. It's the Blue Bell Community. We had a Fourth of July Parade. It was fantastic. I don't, I'm not a counter, but I'd say there were about 100 marchers. I want everybody to know it's open to the community. Anybody can come and march, kids of all ages. But the kids were so cute. I just wish you could have seen them. One little girl was dressed as Betsy Ross. And the rest of them were just so darling. I was so scared that we wouldn't have enough frozen treats for everybody or water, but we made it. And I want to really thank Dennis Smith for bringing a fire truck to lead the parade. It was so wonderful. And I want really want to thank Trinity Baptist Church for letting us use their parking lot to start the parade and end it. And thanks, everybody. Come out next year. We're going to do it again next year. Maybe we'll end with a picnic. Thank you very much.
All right, good. Thanks, Martha. Okay.
Marie Brown.
Yeah, I'm Marie Brown, 916 Barnett Street here in Kerrville. I'd like to start with a kudos to the HEB Foundation, which has been putting together the most beautiful campus on Barnett Street. It's ecologically good. It's full of trees. It's going to be full of trees and brass and porous bricks in the parking lot. Very carefully and beautifully done. And it's a wonderful addition to our population in town. However, everything comes with a price. And the price is the roads. Because we've had, leading up to the campus, we have had lots and lots of trucks over the last several months. Barnett Street has never been smooth, bumping, crack-free. But now it's even more in need of care. And so I just want to make sure that on your list of to-do lists for roads, Barnett Street goes. I'm a bicycle rider. I don't have a car. And I notice every one of those indentations.
Okay, thank you. All right. Then we have a presentation to make. And Ed Livermore, if you would come up here.
This is a resolution of commendation where Ed Livermore has served as a member of the Kerrville-Kerr County Joint Airport Board from 2011 to 2019. And whereas Ed Livermore has served faithfully and beautifully on said board. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, that Ed Livermore be recognized for outstanding service as a member of the Kerrville-Kerr County Joint Airport Board and that on behalf of the citizens of Kerrville, as well as for ourselves individually, we wish to express our sincere appreciation for contributions to the city, the airport, and the community. And this is signed by the City Secretary and the City Council. I know a little bit about Ed's contributions to this board. But one of the things that he has worked on is a program to help high school students get familiar with airport, airplanes, and potentially a career. But anyway, that has been one of the things that he has done. But Ed, thank you very, very much.
You bet.
All right, all right. Now, one more question. Mary, Mary, did you come up? This is Mary Rohr, who is the director of the airport.
You're a wonderful minister.
Yeah, yeah. All right, let's do this. Okay? Here we go.
Great. Thank you.
All right, all right. Thank you.
May I make a comment?
Yeah, sure, sure.
You know me.
Yeah, I know. Go ahead.
I want to say honestly, and this is not any kind of BS, the support that we have from our city and county for the airport, it's jointly owned, it's owned by each, is, has been fabulous for the last, I don't know, all throughout my term. You all are very well informed about the airport. You've been out there. You've made the walks. You've been to the buildings. You've seen what needs to be done. And I really, really ask you to seriously consider more capital investment. You've got a wonderful business there and a wonderful business opportunity. And, but all businesses from time to, from time to time need to be reinvested in. And we're approaching that point for our airport. But anyway, I just, I really cannot tell you how pleased I am with the fabulous support from the mayor and on through the council. You're very well informed. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One item that Mary shared with me, annually, there are 60,000 landings and takeoffs at this airport. You know that their long runway can even and does accommodate a 737?
Okay, only we get that.
We got a Joel out there.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, best wishes to you and the council.
Okay, we move now to the consent agenda and these items that Ms. McElhanan will read into the record. We will take them together unless a member of the council or citizen wants to draw one of them out.
For A, ordinance number 2019-14, the second reading of ordinance number 2019-14, creating a planned development district for our three multifamily, retail trade two, professional office, restaurant general, and custom manufacturing on approximately 58.74 acres, consisting of land out of the Joseph S. Anderson Survey Number 141, Abstract Number 2, and the J.S. Sater Survey Number 142, Abstract Number 290, within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, and generally located north of the intersection of Thompson Drive, Highway 98, and James Road. Adopting a concept plan and conditions related to the development of said district, containing a cumulative clause, containing a savings and severability clause, establishing a penalty or fine not to exceed $2,000 for each day of violation of any provision hereof, ordering publication, and providing other matters relating to the subject. For B, for C, and for D.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the items in the consent agenda. I'll second that motion.
Motion second. All in favor of that, if you'd let me number the raised hand? Now, we come to 5A and Resolution Number 2019. If you would read that for us.
Resolution Number 2019, a resolution amending the city of Kerrville fee schedule by adopting a fee to be charged with respect to an application for a variance to the distance limitation per Chapter 10 of the city code and revising the existing fees applicable to residential building permits.
All right, Ms. Tozer.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Going to introduce this item. So this is a resolution that amends the fee schedule. There's two different items that we're looking at in particular. One relates to the recently updated alcoholic beverage ordinance that was passed. So that ordinance references a fee for a distance variance request, but the current fee structure does not have that fee included. So we're proposing a $150 fee for that variance request, which is in line with other variance request fees that we have. The second portion of the, of the fee schedule resolution relates to building permit fees. And Dr. Marc Garcia is here and he's going to tell you a little bit more about that piece of it.
Thank you. So we have a little quick presentation for you. I'll go through it very quickly, but it is based off of the House Bill 852 that was signed by the governor in Maine, which basically prohibits fees being charged on value or the cost of construction. And so we've done an analysis and trying to figure out how other cities are going to do this. And so based on this analysis, we were able to propose a fee change, a fee of 36 cents per square foot. The idea of this 36 cents per square foot is to remain revenue neutral as much as possible. And the idea is also that this fees do not exceed our actual cost of services. Sorry, got ahead of myself. So this is the actual fees themselves. What we're proposing, as you can see here for any property, we'll have a minimum charge of $25. New construction will be at 36 cents. And any alterations or fire repair, storage buildings would be at 21 cents per square foot. These are the changes that we're proposing today. And how we came to that number was various analysis. But the one we ended up with, what we're presenting to you today is based on this impact analysis. And so if you look at that first chart on the low, on the left side, you will see that we have the average permit on the current fee structure of about, on average, about $899. With the proposed fees, it is going up by $24 on average, so about $923. But then when you start breaking it down between permits that, for houses that were square foot of 1,000 to 2,000 square feet, you actually see that it's actually a little bit lower. It's about $69 lower from 654 to 585. And then from the 2,000 to 3,000 square foot, you go from 881 to 897, so a $17 difference there. The biggest area where you see the greatest difference is the houses that will be over 3,000 square foot. That's looking at a $135 increase. So what we try to do in the second chart, that's a little bit lower than that, is that you try to break it down and to see what the current square foot cost would be in these different brackets. And so you will see that realistically, we're trying to level the playing field. So you have 32 cents square foot charged across the board where if we were looking at up to 1,000, 200, up to 2,000 square feet, you're looking at 40 cents. 2,000 and 3,000, you're looking at 35 cents. And then greater than 3,000, you're looking at 33 cents. So by doing 36 cents, we're actually lowering it down for houses that will be up to 2,000 square feet. And then one penny more at, at 2,000 and 3,000, and then three cents increase at 35, at 30, 3,000, greater than 3,000 square feet. So this is what we're proposing. It does put us in compliance with the state law. It does not exceed our cost of services. And it's simple and objective. The rates are lower and structure much less complicated than comparison cities. And then we're also, what we're doing now, actually, we've already started the process of doing a full, a much more cost analysis, where we're looking at the travel times, the cycle times, looking at building costs. I mean, you get into a whole bunch of cost analysis at this point in time. And so we're looking at manpower, materials, and equipment. So this is, that's further study that we're doing further down the road. But we're already starting to get working on that because that's going to take a lot more detail that we'll probably bring it back to you depending on the analysis going forward. So, any questions?
By state law, this goes into effect immediately?
Yes.
Okay.
It was an immediate change that had to happen.
All right, okay.
Yes. One quick question back on Prop change page. And I know it's currently in effect, but it talks about a 21 cent per square foot for alteration. What triggers alteration?
So if somebody comes in, I want to remodel my house or alter the, the structure itself. And so...
But changing the carpet out is not an alteration?
I have to defer to you on that one.
Structural changes. Structural changes. I want to knock a wall out and... Safe to assume something that needs a permit?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
So it sounds like I heard you say, because this, it is very hard to analyze this when someone's giving a value of a home before they construct it. I mean, it's very subjective. But I ask this because it's important that we don't get into a situation where we, it does end up that it becomes a somewhat significant change to what the builders and contractors are used to. So I say that because what I understand you saying is that we're going to get this in place if we approve it, but you are going to continue to analyze if that's the correct amount that we should be...
Yes, we're going to continue to analyze this because it's going to be important to understand what the full costs are and then come back.
Good, good, because that was my concern.
Ms. Agner?
Yes. So this is all, this is strictly for homes? No commercial?
That is correct. Only residential was impacted by this.
Okay. And will commercial be impacted?
Not at this point in time, unless the state comes back with something new.
Okay. And so commercial is still, is based on?
Value.
Value now. Okay. This does not mention, how do garages, carports, standalone or attached? How do those?
As long as it's under, if I remember correctly, if it's under the roof, then that's what it, the footprint of the roof itself, then that's what it's charged on.
Okay, so a standalone garage or standalone carport would be?
It would be... If you can help me out on that one. I think that would fall in a storage building. Yeah, of course.
So it'd be storage, storage building then? Okay, all right, okay. Those were my questions. I think it's simple. I think it's, I like it, so...
Okay, any other questions? Do we have a motion in regard to this item?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 20-2019, amending the fee schedule for residential building permits.
Second.
All right. Okay, just a minute. I'm sorry. Did we have any speakers?
No, not on 5A.
Okay, we got a motion, second. All in favor, let it be number raised hand? Then we come to Resolution Number 23-2019.
Resolution Number 23-2019, a resolution authorizing the publication of intention to issue certificates of obligation to finance street and drainage improvements in the city. And we do have two citizen speakers signed up.
All right. Okay. Ms. Tozer.
All right. First, before I start the presentation, I'd like to introduce you to our financial advisor who's here today. This is Ann Berger-Entricken. She is joining us from San Antonio. She works for Hilltop Securities where she's a director. And we just figured this out. Ann has actually been the city's financial advisor on our debt issuances for 30 years.
Were you 10 when you started?
It's pretty incredible. So she knows the city's finances very well and she's an expert in the municipal finance industry. So she's here to answer any questions. All right. So first, I'd like to just show you a graph of our general fund debt service. This is something we've been talking about for a little while now, so it should look fairly familiar to you. But you can see that this is our annual debt service. And between 2019 and 2020, there's a drop-off there. We've paid off a couple of our loans during 2019. And we are now to the point where we only have one outstanding issuance, bond issuance, that's being paid by property taxes, and that's our 2017 refinancing. So we have some additional debt capacity starting in fiscal year 2020. And our, our existing property tax-supported debt is currently at 5.2 million total outstanding. Also, a little bit about the interest rate environment that we're in right now. This graph here is looking specifically at U.S. Treasury yields, which, you know, is not exactly the same as the bond interest rate. But just to give you an idea, over the last six months, you'll see those top two lines that are 10 and 20-year yields, so, you know, a little bit longer term. You can see that they've fallen significantly. So we're entering a favorable interest rate environment right now. And the Fed has signaled that they intend to do a 25 basis point rate cut at the end of July. And then there may even be an additional rate cut possible in 2019. We're not sure, but, but a favorable environment for issuing debt. The citizen survey that we heard about just before this meeting started at the workshop. So one of the questions that Ms. Mann told us about was this question that said, "To what extent would you support or oppose funding the following capital projects through the issuance of debt such as a bond without a related property tax increase?" So based on the citizen survey, you know, the statistically valid survey, we had 94% of respondents saying that they would support issuing debt for streets projects and 86 supporting issuing debt for drainage. And it's important to remember that this is issuing debt without a tax rate increase. So what we're looking at and what the resolution calls for is proposed funding of up to 10.5 million in certificates of obligation. The debt portion of our tax rate, our property tax rate, would remain unchanged at 7.35 cents. And that 10 million-ish would be split between some full-depth reconstruction of streets and some drainage projects. So right now, we're looking at about 8 million for full-depth reconstruction and about 2 million for the top two prioritized drainage projects. And these would be certificates of obligation that have a repayment period of 20 years, which is shorter than the useful life of these projects. Moving on to a little bit more about streets and drainage. So these are just graphs and slides pulled directly from the workshop that y'all recently had on streets and drainage. So on the street needs, if you look at the red line kind of in the middle of the graph there, you can see this is from the pavement master plan. And it shows 7.5 million in debt funding plus the 1.625 million annually would keep our pavement condition index close to that target of 70 for the pavement condition index. And one thing that we'll be talking about in our budget workshop next week that we've talked a little bit about, but just to mention again, the street use fee. So the water fund pays the general fund a street use fee. And we are looking for y'all's input on if that's something that might, should be increased from 3% to 4% of water fund revenues. If we did that, that would add about 130,000 to the annual streets budget. Proposed reconstruction, this also comes from the pavement master plan that y'all saw recently. You can see the kind of dark orange-red reconstruction streets listed here. So we have plenty of reconstruction streets available. And... So we have plenty of reconstruction streets, um, available, um, and we'd be prioritizing based on that pavement master plan. On the drainage side of things, um, we also have a drainage master plan that you recently, um, went through, and that master plan is prioritized. Um, and you'll see that projects number one and two, which are pretty close in proximity, kind of related to each other, um, but those two added together get you to around two million dollars is what the, um, current estimate is. And so, um, we'd like to prioritize those and use two million of this issuance for those top two drainage needs projects. And that's, um, near the Take It Easy RV Park and Lois Street that consistently floods. Looking at, um, the calendar, um, let's see, actually, this is, um, July ninth is the, um, resolution authorizing the notice of intent. So that's what we're asking for tonight. So what the resolution does is, um, allows us to publish in the paper and, um, meet our requirements for, um, saying that we're considering doing this. So this isn't actually issuing the debt. It's not actually, um, you know, going through with everything. It's, it's putting everyone on notice that council is considering this debt issuance, and we'll be going down that path. Um, so July seventeenth and July twenty-fourth, the notices will be published in the paper. Um, August thirteenth, um, this is, uh, just FYI, um, it's not necessarily part of this debt process, but, um, that's when council will pass a resolution to set the tax rate, the proposed tax rate. Um, and we're saying there would be no change to the debt portion of the tax rate related to this issuance. August twenty-seventh would be when, um, competitive spit- competitive bids would be due, and that's actually, you know, who wants to buy these certificates of obligation. August twenty-seventh would be when council actually approves and authorizes the bond purchase. Um, and then with a target closing date of September nineteenth. Um, and then we would be able to get started pretty quickly on some of these prioritized streets and drainage, um, projects. And are there any questions?
Council, any questions?
The question that I have, we, this year, we are doing the Hill Country Drive, and that's money that's coming out of the general fund. The project that is mentioned on here, on Hill Country Drive.
No, as, as you recall from the drainage presentation, that is a phased project. And so that piece that is outlined here, um, is, is an extension of, it's really the outfall, uh, as you recall, all the way down to the river. Uh, the portion that we are completing really over the next hundred and eighty days, uh, is really, uh, some reconstruction and adding concrete and sloping, uh, part of the actual, uh, street way.
So this would then finish that out?
Uh, yes, ma'am, that's correct. When the city chooses to take that other piece on.
Okay.
Right, and what we're looking at with this issuance would just be those, um, projects number one and two on the drainage side.
That's right.
Any other questions, council? All right, we have two speakers?
Yes. Michael Bunny Bond. My legal name is Michael Louise Bond. My nickname is Bunny. I live at two one three Stephanie. And, um, I think some of my comments that I planned on going into, I will not go into, because Kim has very kindly, I missed that meeting where you all discussed the streets and I had, and the drainage. And so I have not seen those documents, but she's offered to send them to me. So before I make any comments, I, um, I will look over those before I go. My one question to you would be, um, in this proposed reconstruction plan, my street is on there, and the upper end of my street, in my opinion, does not need reconstruction. I walk that street. Now, the lower end of the street definitely needs it. If you reconstruct the upper end of Stephanie, you will be creating a great, um, downward slope for Lois. And we have a terrible problem on Lois, not just where the drainage is already planned between Woodlawn and Ox, but between Methodist Encampment and Coronada, we have some significant problems because there is not, uh, any drainage into Elm Creek. So basically, the water races down the upper end of Stephanie off the hills. It floods my next-door neighbors, the Vills. It goes into their garage often if it comes down real hard. I'm sure there are other people on the street who face that too. Uh, but then it pools at the end of Stephanie, at the end of Aaron, and because the drainage to Elm Creek is actually farther on. So that lower part of Elm Creek, Elm Creek Park, really, it's sort of a drain field, but not a really good drain field because it doesn't slope that much. So all that would happen would be, every time we get a hard rain, the pavement on Lois is undermined more and more. And so if you're reconstructing the upper part of my street, it's just gonna go, pshh. It's really gonna be a speedway for that water to go down to Lois. I would much prefer this. Something was done about Lois between Methodist Encampment and Coronada, uh, because the traffic there, it's all the school traffic to tally. So I would urge staff to really reconsider. Granted, my street is more than forty years old, but when I looked up some things about street paving, you know, a lot of streets, particularly if they're not heavily traveled, like our upper end of Stephanie, they'll, they're good for fifty years or more if they're occasionally resurfaced. And I do wanna comment on the fact that the city is very good to come out. I have a neighbor who every time there's a pothole, she calls the city, okay? And so our potholes do get fixed on a regular basis. They get filled, which we do appreciate. But there's a pothole watcher in the neighborhood, okay? And I really appreciate it that Lake Lois between Woodlawn and Ox is on the, um, Kim's nodding her head 'cause she goes that way all the time too, uh, is on the drainage project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Peggy McKay?
Peggy McKay, one oh three Westchester, Kerrville. A- and the two areas that I'm concerned about are the fact that we have another certificate of obligation and not a, uh, bond that's put to the voters. And in the last two budgets, there has been mentioned that the choices were there for either certificates of obligation or, um, a bond to the voters. And also, it looks like we're going to do streets on a, um, uh, a few at a time and a bond issue at a time. And I'm guessing that as the, as the debt goes down, that we'll be adding more streets. And I, two things I would like is if, if the voters could please have a, uh, a vote in the bonds. And, and the, uh, selection of streets, as Bunny said, uh, there was a survey in twenty seventeen, and I noticed that the Take It Easy area only had about eighteen percent support for that particular project. But it seems that there are projects that are of equal need in the city. And I would hope that the citizens who took that survey would have some, um, position in the decision-making. Um, and also, I don't understand the, the street use. I don't understand how that's established because if, if we increase a three percent draw from the water fund, then, um, it adds to the burden of the taxpayer because our rates keep going up. In nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, we have water and sewer rates at two or six percent. And if we're going to continue to draw down from the water, doesn't that add to the burden of the water user? Because the rates keep going up every year. And when you do the percentages, as we all know, by the time we get to twenty and twenty-one, w- we're taking on the increases that came in in nineteen and twenty as well. So I'd, I'd like to see, uh, bond issues with voter approval and, um, maybe in more input on which streets. I know that there was a survey and a project handled a study, but I think that the people who live in the town, um, and use these streets have a really good idea of, of the most need in the streets, and I hope those are considered.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion in regard to this item?
I will move that we pass Resolution number twenty-three dash twenty nineteen, authorizing publication of intention to issue certificates of obligation.
I'll second it.
All right, got a motion, second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a point of order?
Yeah.
If we have a speaker, is it, and it's not in the visitors forum, and, and there's something that, that we wanna ask staff to address that they said, or something that we ourselves have as a comment, is that allowable under our procedures?
Yeah, yeah, it is.
About the, this particular agenda item?
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
Okay, because I, I, you know, I was gonna ask the city staff a question. I know we've already approved it, but just to be clear, um, I just wanted to make it real clear because it was made clear to me about how the streets were determined as far as need in the drainage projects. And on a very, uh, we've already gone over this, but just to address Mrs. McKay's question, rather than having a subjective citizen analysis based on people that turn and vote, how this was determined as far as how to rank the projects.
Sure. Well, we certainly value the impact that, of, of, you know, the voice of somebody that is experiencing an issue with their street firsthand, 'cause that, if we, if we miss something, we wanna know about it. But, um, as you pointed out, you, there were, there were studies that were performed by engineering firms. Um, and in the case of streets, had some very sophisticated equipment in writing the street. And the council has also asked us to look at longer segments of streets as opposed to small segments where you have a lot of mobility cost, uh, around the city associated with that, and then your cost for total construction is higher per lane mile. So we've tried to do that. Um, but i- it's been very, um, uh, very objective in terms of, uh, the analysis of which, which are the priorities. In case of drainage, um, these, we had the whole matrix that we laid out in terms of actual flooding and property damage and the number of, uh, folks impacted, and that's how those two rose to the top, uh, as well as readiness and, and environmental issues, a lot of other factors. But we had a designed matrix for that. You know, the other thing too, that when you get into, um, uh, voter approval on certain things, it bec- it becomes a bit of a popularity contest. And so if I've got, if I live on a cul-de-sac and there's only five people on my cul-de-sac and it's completely destroyed, people may not vote for it 'cause they never traveled down it. So it's like, let's give you a recommendation of how much money we should spend, and then let us give you a recommendation based upon engineering and science about which ones are the, are the worst, certainly taking into public comment, but, uh, but doing it more of an, uh, an objective evaluation.
And like Mrs. Bond, Mrs. Bond's comments?
Sure.
We can take a, we can d- take a deeper dive into something like that.
EA was over here making notes, so.
We can do something like that.
Because these are not, that, this is not totality of, of the projects that were the streets that would be involved.
Well.
Could be involved.
Well, and they identified the amount, dollar, estimated dollar amount of re- total reconstruction. We have some liberty to shift some things around based upon field conditions and what we might discover in the interim. And it'll be probably, you know, that, that's the other thing too, is if we, if y'all go out to the voters, that's November, then you're, you're probably gonna be a year later than you would otherwise, and we've obviously got a street problem that we need to get ahead of. And so this would take care of those worst streets, um, and, and hopefully, you know, 'cause the price could shift by the time we actually get to issuing, uh, the bids. So, uh, anyway, we'll, we'll need to tweak that, so to speak, in terms of, of which streets. But we're, we've identified those that the consultant did with the, um, the machinery that evaluated the, with radar about the condition of the street and so forth. Um, we'll, but we'll look at that again before we actually.
Well, I think what I would ask is, once we're down the road and you're getting ready to let bids or whatever, just as a council member, I'd like to know which streets.
Sure.
Yeah.
So if we can get that report back so that we could visit with the citizens and let them know kind of which of the areas that we're gonna be working in.
Yeah, definitely. You bet.
Uh, let me say, just in general, um, I've been very impressed in this year-plus as mayor, how the city uses consultants very strategically, who are very targeted in their area, whether it's drainage, streets, it's aquatics, whatever. And yes, that costs us, but they come back to us with recommendations, including, uh, how we can save money in the process. And they've done this kind of thing, uh, all over the country, so they, they bring to us some really good experience. And then, yes, as, uh, the city manager's indicated, sure, as we, as we approach the project, we're gonna look at, again, the specific of, of a particular area, particular road or street, whatever. And so you got decisions at that level as well. Okay, uh, I, I am sorry you didn't speak, and, uh, so.
It's a pleasure to be here and hear you do a fabulous job on the presentation.
Thank you. We're, we're very proud of the job that Ms. Dozier is doing, right? Okay, uh, items for future agendas. Um, I've got one, and, and I've mentioned this before, but I'm gonna come back to it. And I don't have my homework done yet, but I really wanna see us do a tree ordinance. I recognize that that is not easy, not easy to enforce. But it really gets to me to see big, beautiful historic trees bulldozed under, uh, by new construction or expansion or whatever else. And we're also, you know, the preservation of natural beauty ought to be a big concern for us in Kerrville. And with oak wilt and the balm moss, we are seeing more and more trees just decimated. So I will work on that and work with the city attorney to look at some ordinances, but at some point, I wanna bring that back.
And I would second that. I've had people this past week approach me with the same, "We need tree ordinance."
So mayor, the, the code review committee is already actually looking at that as part of their subdivision code. Um, and so their, their next meeting is August thirtieth, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, July thirtieth. And that's part, one of the components of that, as well as landscaping and other things. So, but what that looks like, 'cause we don't have anything like that now, you know, is yet to be determined. And, uh, uh, eventually, it comes to P and Z and council.
Okay, all right. Anything else? Okay, um, is there a motion to go into executive session? Okay, if not, folks, it's six forty-eight. You wanna add some things to the agenda? Oh, okay. We adjourn.